District 721 to order and we'll do a roll call. Vote, Mark. You have to turn your microphones on for this.
Here.
Uh, Leo.
Here.
Matt.
Here.
Dennis.
Here.
Kim. Kim.
Here, here. Tammy. My mic.
Oops. Oh Tammy, I see Tammy popped on, um. Tammy, you wanna unmute for a minute? Tammy?
Hi Jean.
Hi, your ear?
I'm here.
Mean it there, please, uh, please, uh, show that all board members are present. And, uh, I, we don't have any open forum tonight. Okay, um.
Correct.
Can I get a motion? Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second? There a second?
Second.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, another, uh, roll call vote, Mark. All those in favor?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy? 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 Okay, Jean? Yes, I don't know what we do about Tammy, she's not answering. Oh, there's. Tammy, do you approve the agenda? Yes, okay, all. Okay, everybody. Everybody approved the agenda, seven zero. So now, um, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Okay. Is that a second then?
We're after a round.
Yeah. Do we, do you have a, do you have a second on that, Jeanelle? Okay, Matt. Okay, so another roll call vote, Mark. All those in favor, Mark?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy? Tammy?
Yes.
Jean, yes, motion carried, seven zero.
Yes.
Okay, um.
Yes.
Now we'll have the committee reports, um, policy.
The, no update.
Okay, uh, Southwest Metro?
No meeting during the month of, uh, June and July.
Okay, and that, does that go for the C-PAC also?
That's correct, no meeting.
Okay, community ed?
Community ed and wellness, no meeting.
Okay, early childhood, no meeting, and then the fitness and aquatics center joint powers?
We did not meet.
Okay. Um, now we have the student attendance report.
All right, well, I'm gonna start with probably the best news is that, uh, this will be our last virtual meeting. Um, we're planning on, uh.
I was gonna ask that.
July thirteenth, our next meeting, uh, we only have one meeting in July, but we're gonna arrange the boardroom, um, so we keep social distancing and, uh, can be in person, so that's what, uh, that's what our plans are for July thirteenth, so, yeah, I think that's really good news, cuz I'm getting tired of these, uh, not just these meetings, but obviously we've had a lot of meetings, Zoom meetings or Google Meet meetings, it'll be good to get back in person, so. Um, anyway, uh, second thing, I just wanna, again, publicly, uh, congratulate the class of twenty twenty, um, and also a big thanks goes out to, uh, the administrative team and parents and everyone for, uh, really going above and beyond and really, uh, doing the best we can with the situation, whether it was a senior drive-through and having those picture posters that were donated from the New Prague Chamber of Commerce, they're having the individual ceremonies at the stadium, uh, with the parade, uh, parent-sponsored parade, which is a great deal, and then finishing them with the virtual graduation, which was at the Elko Drive-In this past Wednesday, so. It's all done now, um, obviously we move on now, but again, congratulations to the class of twenty twenty and a big thanks to Nicole Adams and her staff for, uh, putting together, it was a great team effort. Uh, another thing, update, um, and I sent you this information, uh, we'll be part of the Metro West Conference beginning in twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year, and, um, Brad will probably comment about that a little bit later when he talks about a few things, but, uh, we think this is a great fit for our, our school, for our kids, um, enrollment size will be right in the middle, uh, will be, have closer, uh, traveling distance or proximity to these schools for the most part, and, uh, yeah, I, I think it'll help us, and with the fine arts too, there's more, it's, it's much stronger, uh, has lots more, uh, conference activities for, uh, music and, uh, speech and that type of thing, so we're very excited to get to the Metro West, we, uh, enjoyed our time in the Wright County Conference, but, uh, uh, I think it'll be a very positive thing for this school district. Uh, the last thing I'm gonna just talk about, and I sent you some information on Friday, um, in regards to fall planning, uh, like I told you, there's a statewide conference call and they also created a hundred-page, uh, planning guidance document, um, so we're going through that right now. Um, I will say, um, best, well, one of the good things on that guidance document is this time, they, uh, really defined, uh, what is a recommendation and what is required. Uh, if you remember, early on in the graduation, they just had a guideline, which a lot of people thought were just recommendations, but we found out shortly thereafter that it was, uh, requirement, so, um, and since then, um, we got that, we put together a steering committee, I've got, uh, ten administrators that are on that, um, the, we have a, uh, principal from the elementary, Will Remmer, Brad Gregor from the middle school, Nicole Adams High School, uh, Amy Johnson is the director of special services, we have her on there, and of course Sandy Lynn, human resources and finance, Janelle Kirsch representing early childhood education and community services, Craig Moss representing transportation, buildings and grounds and technology, Sean Brandt, uh, technology and Jen Cheniker Health Services, so they're gonna, uh, begin plans for the scenarios, but the different possibilities of teaching and learning we have coming up here this fall, uh, but, you know, keep in mind, I mean, we'll be reaching out to, uh, parents and employees, uh, various through, uh, surveys and focus groups in the next month, uh, so the, it, these people will be working with uh, other people in their, uh, areas, and so I didn't want a huge task force or anything like that, kept it small, but we'll be counting on these people to lead smaller groups and getting input from a variety of sources as we prepare for the week of July twenty-seventh, uh, with the state will finally come out with a, more specific, uh, recommendations and, uh, requirements to what fall learning will look like. Now, keep in mind, uh, they've talked about three models, um, one is, I have, obviously in-person, one was a hybrid, and third would be just, uh, simply distance learning. The thing that they emphasized on the conference call is that, you know, they will start out telling us all districts what, uh, model we'll be starting out with, and like, I'm very, I'm hopeful it will be in-person to start with, but as the year goes, uh, for example, if there's a second wave, um, it could be, you know, we could go mov- move in and out to the other two, uh, depending, so we need to be flexible and prepared for that. I will say this, as far as that goes, what I like about it best, we have local control, even though we all start out to start the year the same, uh, how we respond or choose, uh, the type of teaching and learning is a local decision, so the state is not gonna be telling every district what to do throughout the year, uh, so there will be no, I don't believe there'll be any decree, you know, midway through the fall saying, oh, all districts gotta do it this way, they realize that, uh, it's gonna be different in different parts of the state and where it's to COVID nineteen, so we have, uh, local control, which I like. So like I said, first meeting is tomorrow, uh, with that steering team, uh, we have met three times already with teachers to initiate, uh, and discuss what the desired learning experience is, uh, but like I said, we'll be sending out this week, Sandy's preparing an employee survey that's gonna go out this week, and then in a couple weeks following, there'll be a parent survey there too, so we're trying to find out what their intent and sending their kids back, uh, where they, what they prefer, what option they would prefer, and, uh, obviously we think, uh, getting parent input is gonna be very, very important uh, in regards to that, so that's where we're at, I mean, I'll be giving you another update, um, every week, but especially be, uh, on July thirteenth when we meet again. So, that's all I've got.
Okay, thank you, um, next item is, uh, or does anybody have any comments on that? Okay. Uh, next item is the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee Resolution.
That, yeah, I've got Gospel Corda here, he's gonna give us an update we're at with this, this is a, uh, the state provides funding, uh, for American Indian students and, and Gospel Corda, uh, our equi-coordinator is in charge of that program, and I've asked him to come and give us an update where we're at with things and give us some information, so go ahead, Gospel.
Okay, thank you, um, just a very quick update, uh, just about where, where we started with the program and kinda what we have right now established. Um, usually you'll get some, some type of funding when you get over a certain number, uh, we surpassed that number, we currently have thirty-seven American Indian students, uh, district-wide, um, and what we've done for the past couple of years now is establish program and to support the grants, um, that we're getting in, and then also provide more, uh, equitable, um, access and opportunities to various different things that they wouldn't otherwise have. Um, and so we will, usually will take students to, um, college visits, especially that's one of the things that the parents talked a lot about, um, if we weren't able to take them, if, it's much harder for the parents to take them, um, and so every year we try to do about three, three to four college visits, um, I, we got a couple in this year before we were, uh, we were out due to COVID, um, and so a lot of those funds are getting prorated for, uh, American Indian books and different, uh, resources that we need throughout the district. Um, so currently, um, we have to do this every year, um, we've gotta get it signed off every year, make sure that we're still in compliance with, uh, uh, Minnesota Department of Education, uh, and then also the Office of, uh, American Indian, um, and so this is part of what we have to do on, on a yearly basis, and the program has been taken off, um, on the student side of things, we're still trying to grow and establish things on the parent side of things as we still progress.
Okay, do we, do we need an action on this tonight?
I believe that Dennis is going to sign, uh, the document, correct, Dennis?
Yes, correct, and we also have the resolution that I'll be reading as well.
Yep. And then once we get through those, I will be able to, uh, meet with my parent group and then get that forwarded to, uh, the American Indian office.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
At this time, I'll accept the motion to consider the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee Resolution.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded to consider the following resolution, whereas the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee is directly involved with and advises the school board and district staff on Indian education program planning, whereas the American Indian Parent Advisory Council develops and submits recommendations to the school board and district staff pertaining to the needs of American Indian students. Therefore, be it resolved that the American Indian Parent Advisory Council concurs that the school board and district are compliant with Minnesota statutes and that the school board and district are meeting the needs of American Indian students. How do you vote on this, Matt?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes, yes.
Tammy, Mark?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Yes.
Dennis, yes, item passed with seven zero.
Okay, and, uh, next item is, uh, approval of the increase for activities.
Yeah, we got, uh, Brad Scoliver, our activities director here tonight, uh, uh, make a recommendation for a fee increase and give us some history here, so go ahead, Brad.
Okay, thank you, everybody, um, I said, had, uh, I sent you the information earlier, uh, the comparables and so on that we use to help us with the, the actual, uh, um, recommendation. I went back and looked and, uh, you know, we've had my first three years in New Prague, in two thousand eight, nine, nine, ten, ten, eleven, we had increases um, of twenty dollars every year, the last time we had an increase was two thousand sixteen, seventeen. So, in two thousand eight, we were at a hundred and twenty-five dollars for an athletic fee, and now we are, uh, we have been at a hundred and eighty dollars for an athletic fee with four hundred and seventy-five dollar family cap. Um, so we are looking at, um, looking at the comparables, the average, um, i- is a hundred and eighty-six dollars, and, uh, we have been at a hundred and eighty, so we're looking at moving the athletics to a hundred and ninety-five dollars, and I know some of these school districts are, are also, uh, doing this now, um, so that number, the average is gonna go up. Um, and middle school, um, will go from ninety to a hundred and ten dollars, and then the family cap would move from four seventy-five to, uh, five twenty-five. Any questions on that?
Just a quick one for me, is there an allowance for, uh, families of low income, or how does that work? What's the, what's the?
Good question, uh, what we do is based on, uh, uh, free, free and reduced lunch, if they fill out the paperwork and they are on free, they do not pay a fee, if they're reduced, they pay half a fee, or half the fee, so, and we have, I also, uh, written grants with the state high school league, which we have then used that money, um, to pay kids' fees, uh, so they could be part of our programming.
Does anybody have any other questions? Hey, could I have a motion to approve the increased fees?
I'll make the motion.
So. Second.
Okay, all those in favor, I will do a roll call, Mark?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Matt?
Yeah.
Dennis?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy? Tammy? Tammy?
Hello?
Yes? Okay. Jean, yes, motion carried, seven zero. And, uh, next item is the second reading of the, and the approval of the fiscal year twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one budget.
Yes, thank you, I'll have Janelle, um, pull up the presentation before I continue. Okay, yes, we are gonna have final approval tonight of the preliminary twenty twenty-one, um, budget. The changes in the general fund since the first reading, I added five thousand dollars to the operating capital for fine arts, we typically have a twenty-five-hundred-dollar allowance for both the middle school and the high school every year, and, uh, sometimes it gets spent and sometimes it doesn't, I wasn't aware of a request, um, so I took it out, but then I got a request from the middle school, so I decided to put that back in. Um, and then in the unassigned, I added, um, a little bit for middle school general supplies, they were missed in the original, uh, preliminary budget. Um, operations, I actually decreased that by a little over sixteen thousand dollars to reflect a new cap release that will go into effect in August. Uh, Craig was able to negotiate a better deal on the next lease, uh, we have one expiring in August. And then property insurance is going up fifty thousand dollars to reflect the worst-case scenario, which I'll also actually present to you um, in, in a little bit, actually, it will not be fifty thousand dollars now because I was involved in a subcommittee meeting last Friday, and we did, um, or last Thursday, and we did decrease it some, but, um, right now, it, as it stands, we'd increase that by fifty thousand dollars. So, um, the new, uh, preliminary budget overview would have the total, uh, assigned, a total fund balance at the end of twenty twenty-one be seven point five million, and the total unassigned be five point seven million or twelve point five percent of the, of the budget, and I just wanna reiterate with you that, um, because so much is unknown about the school year, we, you know, we definitely, um, will have some revisions to do it, once we know, um, more about what's gonna be happening and the staffing levels we need and what flexibility the state's gonna give to us, so this is basically planning as a regular year, and, um, that's the best we can do, that's what districts are doing, and then we're gonna have to adjust on the fly as we go. Then, uh, that's just a, a graph showing our, our total unassigned fund balance, um, history and projected. Then for nutrition services, I project the year-end balance, um, in Fund Two to be four hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars, that is a, um, slight increase, um, about thirty thousand dollars, even though we, um, obviously our revenue went way down, our expenses went down, but we also had to, we're gonna have to, um, transfer in a hundred and two thousand dollars from LTFM general fund revenue to the Fund Two because we can't pay for salaries of nutrition services, um, workers when they're not working because it's a federal grant, we can't pay for it with a federal grant, so we're having to transfer that money in, as I reported last month, um, I will have that resolution on July thirteenth, uh, for the board to approve. And then also, as I reported last time, we're gonna be rolling the nineteen twenty budget into twenty twenty-one until more is known about meal delivery options. Um, right now, we have it ranging from, um, you know, some sort of congregate feeding in cafeterias with social distancing to, um, delivering food to classrooms, to having students come down and get it in the, in the cafeteria, and then bringing it back to classrooms. Um, in one scenario, we'll have to be doing, you know, meal delivery at the same time we're feeding kids in school, so it's a kind of a hodgepodge right now, and, and I'll be working closely with Kim to, um, figure out how that will work. We, it's very possible we'll have to buy some equipment if we're doing, you know, meal delivery to classrooms and so forth, so again, it's a, it's a moving target. Uh, community services, I project the fund balance overall to be just under five hundred thousand dollars. And, um, again, we're having to transfer in, um, three hundred and five thousand dollars approximately from LTFM revenue into the Fund Four due to, um, uh, due to COVID, uh, to make up for lost revenue, basically. And again, I'm not sure I'll have that on the thirteenth, I'm thinking that's more in August because it's gonna be a little bit more unknown, um, take a little bit longer to finalize, but I'll have, you know, we'll, we'll have that final transfer, we can do it after the fact as long as it's before our audit. And then again, we rolled the nineteen twenty budget into next year due to unknown, um, services that we can offer. Uh, construction and bond funds, um, very good news is, we are gonna be spending, actually, we just spent the last of our, our Fund Six funds, which is good. Uh, that's the first time, um, in many years we have not had any bond funds, um, our construction funds, excuse me, construction funds. And then our bond fund will end up this year, projected balance of about one point eight million, and next year, two point three million. So we're asking for approval of the budget tonight, and September we'll have updated enrollment, we are watching that very closely, I've done some modeling on what that will look like as far as, you know, if we go down a certain percentage, um, in enrollment, how that will affect our revenue. A, a five percent reduction in enrollment does not equal a five percent reduction in revenue because we get something called declining enrollment revenue, so it's not a, kind of a one-for-one. And so we'll keep a close eye on that, um, October we'll have audit results, and December we'll have the final budget, and then January we'll have updated five-year projections, and then that starts, starts the budgeting process for twenty-one, twenty-two. So I would just ask for approval of the budget, um, and I'll answer, answer any questions that you have.
Does anyone have any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the budget.
Second.
And, uh, how do you vote, Mark?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy? Tammy? Tammy?
She's Mark Green.
Okay, and Jean, yes, so motion carried, seven zero. Yeah, we heard you.
Gotcha.
Okay, and now we have, um, let's see. Approval of the, uh, twenty twenty to twenty-one meal prices. No, I'm sorry, I've got, oh, here's next one. Resolution approving the ten-year facility plan for the long-term facilities maintenance review revenue program.
Would you like me to do the brief presentation before or after the resolution is entered into, um, play?
Sandy, why don't you do it before?
Okay. Uh, so every year we are required, I think you can go to the next slide, Janelle, thank you. We are required to approve this every year prior to our levy planning process, and, um, we can levy less than the maximum. Um, we have not chosen to do that, and I would not recommend that, especially with some of the, um, flexibilities we've been giving with the, given with those funds due to COVID. Um, the revenue that is being, that is attached, does not match the preliminary budget exactly because of prior year adjustments and stuff, so if you were trying to tie numbers together, it doesn't quite work, just wanted to point that out. And also wanna point out that in fiscal year twenty-nine, the general fund revenue increases so much because the LTFM bonds we issued a couple of years ago will, will stop, that'll be paid for, so, uh, the revenue, again, it's a ten-year projection through fif- fiscal year twenty thirty, and asking for your approval on the revenue piece, and then the next slide is the expenditures. Uh, the large projects we have, um, in twenty twenty-one, we have the building controls at the high school in Falcon Ridge. Um, that was part of the budget that you just approved, um, in twenty-one, twenty-two, we, uh, have the building controls at Eagleview and Raven Stream. Uh, like it or not, that building, those buildings are getting old, they were built in two thousand six, and, um, we're having to start, you know, doing some updating in those buildings. Uh, fire panel at the elementary school, starting in twenty-one, twenty-two, we're doing the fighter, fire panel at the high school this year and into July. We also put in a tennis court in twenty-three, twenty-four, so we are, um, uh, surf, resurfacing that or, or sealing it, or whatever they call it, um, in twenty twenty-one, but that will only buy another few years of life, and so, uh, Craig has put that in there for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then way out in twenty-six, twenty-seven, we tentatively put a turf replacement, that turf would typically only last, last twelve to, uh, thirteen years, although Craig said it's performing very well, we have to test it every year, but just to be safe, we put that in there as well. Um, but even with all those projects, um, there will be some that come up because there's always something that comes up, um, but we're, you know, sitting pretty good as far as having, um, having a fund balance to, uh, to, to do other projects as they come up. So yes, I would just ask for approval of that plan to submit to, um, MDE. Any questions?
I have a question.
Yeah.
I do, maybe Brad would know. That, that tennis court, does that mean that you have to peel the whole floor up and redo the whole thing? Do you know? Does anybody know?
Yeah, I think for that twenty-three, twenty-four, yeah, that's what would have to be done. Um, now we're just, this summer, we're just, uh, fixing, repairing the, uh, the shift off and all that kinda stuff, fill those spots in and get re- Fill those spots in and repaint it this year. But it'll be completely redone in 2324.
So is that like, that's like a rubber cord on top of concrete? Or how's that made, you know?
Yeah, it is, it's a, there's a couple of different layers to it. It's, there's more to it than one would think. But the big issue with, obviously, is the seasons. So they have some different layers on it to try and keep them cracking, but we have not had much left. High school courts, middle school courts, high school courts have been trouble for us.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Dennis, do you have the resolution?
Yep. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to consider the resolution approving the 10-year facility plan for the long-term facilities maintenance review program.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to consider the following resolution. Whereas the 10-year facility plan must be updated and approved annually and reported to the Minnesota Department of Education, whereas the New Prague Area School Board has reviewed the long-term facilities maintenance review program and has reviewed the school district's 10-year facilities plan. Now therefore be resolved by the School Board of Education, 21, I'm sorry, for the years 2021 to 2030, 10-year facility plan, be approved for submission to the Minnesota Department of Education. How do you vote on this, Leo?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Mark? Tammy?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Matt?
Yeah.
Dennis, yes, item passes 7-0.
Okay. Next item is approval of the fiscal year 2021 missed renewal.
Yes. Okay, so as I said in the notes and said during the budget approval, this is a worst-case scenario, and the worst-case scenario is not going to be happening. I found out, actually just finalized it probably just about an hour or so ago. What's happening in the market is two things. One is just our overall market hardening. And we experienced this last year as well, just with all the natural disasters and everything that's happening. But then with, when COVID hit, that is a serious problem, potential problem for insurance companies because companies could be sued for, by people that contracted COVID on their premises. We're seeing it in workers' comp as well, that in certain professions, it's automatically considered a workers' comp injury if they contract COVID, even if they can't prove that they got it at work. And the other thing that was happening just at the end was all the civil unrest. And of course, Minneapolis was the epicenter for that. And that happening at the very end really hurt the ability for Minnesota pools to get, you know, to negotiate further because of all the political unrest in the state, or the civil unrest in the state. So I've got, I mean, there's some good news. First of all, I can say that based, we've been in the pool since 1314. We're going to be getting a little over $10,000 for our, for that first year. So the advantage of being in a pool is that you put a lot of money in the loss fund, and the loss fund is what you use to pay the smaller claims, up to $150,000. If that's not all used, then districts get that back. So we're able to get $10,000 back from our very first year. We'll get that here in the next couple of weeks. But the increase, even though it's right now about $150,000, almost half of that is being contributed to the loss fund. That is not being paid to insurance companies. That is being paid to ourselves to pay claims out of. So if we don't have claims, we have a chance of getting that back. So that's the good news. And I was just involved, as the treasurer of the pool, I was involved in a subcommittee last Thursday to look at options. And we're able to lower some of our limits. Back when insurance was really cheap, we had, you know, like an excess loss limit of $400 million. We're lowering that to $200 million because the likelihood of a $400 million loss, actually, the likelihood of a $200 million loss in our pool is 0.01%. They've done 10,000 years of weather modeling, and they have ways of doing this. And so already, and we were able to save $350,000 on the renewal just for that. So we're also going to be able to increase our cyber coverage just a little bit. Cyber problems, cybercrime has been huge in some of our districts. We were also able to increase that a little bit, which is really going to be good. So I just asked for approval on a worst-case scenario, knowing that it will not be this high. I would guess it's probably going to go down around $15,000 to $20,000. That would be my guess, although it's based on our experience and everything, and I haven't gotten the actual renewal for our district. New Prague has the award of, right now, having the highest claim in Miss. So that is also hurting us as far as how much of that increase we have to absorb because of our experience. Actually, it was a bus accident in 1718, or 1819. So anyway, just ask for any questions that you might have, and then approval of this. Are there any questions?
Can we get a motion to approve the missed renewal?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. We'll do the roll call. Mark?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy? 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 I think that, I think that will be, yes, okay.
Yes, 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 yes.
Should, yes.
Okay, Jean, yes, the motion carries 7-0. Next item is approval of fiscal year 2021 meal price.
Okay, I'm going to get a sore throat tonight from talking so much. Bring up that presentation, Janelle. Janelle, can you bring up that presentation?
Yes, I'm working on it, it's going slow.
Thank you. I didn't know if you heard me. That one time I was at home and I ended up, I ended up talking for two minutes before I realized I was no longer being heard. So you never know what's going to happen. Okay, first slide just summarizes our fund balance a little bit for the last several years. You can see we're going to end up this year about $466,000. These are our current prices that we, that we've had for two years, actually. And the next slide is the key one, and that is how we compare to our comparable districts, but more importantly, our surrounding districts. And you can see that we are low. We have, we have been high. We've seen some huge increases. For instance, Northfield increased all of their prices by 15 cents. And so you have districts that are increasing quite a lot, and that is showing us to be low. So really, in all, in all categories, we're low except for milk, actually. So we are recommending a 5-cent increase for every student meal, lunch, and breakfast. Like I said, we did not increase last year. And then we increased the adult lunch 10 cents, and actually, the adult breakfast 10 cents as well. Even though our fund balance is quite good there, and we have some equipment needs. We've got some pretty old ovens. And we've got some needs in that, in those areas. And we don't know what's going to be happening with COVID. And I know this can be a hard time to increase meal prices, but competitively, we are low, and we do try to stay competitive. And I just would ask for approval of this increase. The last slide just summarizes where we're at and the increases, the new increased lunches and purchase prices. Any questions or comments?
Hey, if there aren't any questions, can we have a motion to approve the 2021 meal prices?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Are you, how do you vote, Mark?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Jean, yes. Motion carried 7-0. Next item is approval of the bread vendor.
And I think we can take the bread and the milk vendor together. That could save a little bit of time. I have both of them there. We actually didn't take these for approval last, last year, but I think it is important sometimes to educate you on the processes that we go through for, in our nutrition services group, to see the bread bids. We are going to be staying with Panigold Baking. They came in slightly less. That is our current vendor and have had really good luck with them. And then the other is going to be the milk bid. And we are currently, we are currently not with Plainview. And I, I just had it in my head, and it went out as far as who is our, who our current milk vendor is. Anyway, again, Plainview came out well under Kemp's. And so we are recommending the Plainview for the milk vendor for the year. So I think you can take these two together to approve them. If you have any questions or comments.
Okay, if there aren't any questions, could I have a motion to approve both the bread and the milk vendors for the coming year?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, Mark?
Hi.
Leo?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Jean, yes, motion carried 7-0. Okay, the next item is approval of memorandum of understanding between, understanding between ISD 721 and NPEM.
Yeah, that's New Prague Education, Minnesota.
Okay.
Yeah, so this, we became aware that we needed to have a change in our contract, our current contract language for early childhood. ECFE staff says that we will notify them of their assignment for the fall by July 1st. This year, that's just not possible with not knowing what services we could be offering. So talked with NPEM, and they were fine with basically waiving that deadline and notifying the staff as soon as, as we can following the announcement from MDE the week of July 27th. They're being very flexible on this, and we really appreciate it. And they know that we're going to do everything we can to get the information to them soon, but it's just not possible to give them their assignments right now.
Okay, are there any questions? If not, could I have a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the school district and New Prague Education, Minnesota?
So moved.
Second? Okay, all those in favor, Mark?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Jean, yes. Motion carries 7-0. The next item is a resolution to commit funds for future severance and other post-employment benefit payments.
Yes, this is a resolution you see from me every year. And what we have been doing since I started with the district in 2010 is committing funds from our unassigned fund balance to pay for future severance payments. It was initially started mainly for the teachers. That's all been paid out. And so we have very few employees that still have a grandfathered severance benefit. And at the end of last year, we had almost $189,000 committed. We did not pay out anything in 1920. And we are committing no additional dollars. So again, we're going to be committing $188,947 at the end of fiscal year 1920. Any questions or comments on that?
If not, then I'll go ahead and with the resolution. I have a motion to consider the resolution to commit funds for future severance and other post-employment benefit payments.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded and considered the following resolution. It resolves that New Prague Area School Board of Education that New Prague Area Schools will take a portion of the unassigned general fund balance to account for future severance and other post-employment benefit liability to enable better planning for future payments. As it desires, the school board can adjust the amount of money committed for these purposes within the general fund balance. How do you vote on this, Tammy?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Dennis, yes, item passes 7-0.
Yeah, the next item is a resolution to make a permanent fund transfer from Fund I to Fund II.
Again, this is a resolution we've done, I think, for the, this is the third resolution like this. And we are not allowed, per federal grant guidelines, to use federal funds to eliminate bad debt. And so we are required to reinstate those funds using general fund money. In the past, it's been much higher than 2001-9806. It was really a lot less this year for a couple of reasons. One is that we didn't serve lunches the last two and a half months. But two, because of COVID, we did not turn over. We were going to turn over more for collection at the end of the year, but we decided not to because of COVID. So we kind of, you know, I made that decision that it just, probably the timing wasn't very good. So while we do have a higher negative balance, we are going to let that roll into next year. And this year, just, we transferred just the 2001-9806 that just accounts like for the first half of the year. And so next year, you might be seeing a little larger one, but we felt that was the right thing to do. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, at this time, I'll consider a motion to look at the resolution, make a permanent fund transfer from Fund 001 to Fund 002.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded and considered the following resolution. It resolves that New Prague Area School Board of Education that New Prague Area Schools will transfer $2,198.06 of its unassigned general fund balance for the Nutrition Services Fund 02, effective June 30th, 2020. How do you vote on this, Leo?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dennis, yes, item passes 7-0.
Okay, our next item is a resolution to make a permanent fund transfer from Fund 01 to Fund 04.
Yeah, this is another resolution we're used to seeing every year. We do have to do early childhood screening. And the funds that we receive from Minnesota Department of Education is not, they're not adequate to cover all of our costs for that. It's a very typical issue that school districts have. And so we, at the last several years, we've done a $15,000 transfer to cover that, that loss. When I first started here, we had a negative fund balance at our unassigned Fund IV of about $90,000, and it was entirely due to that. And so we tried to keep up on it. There is some justification to spend that out of the general fund because it does assist in child find for special education, because they're able to find children that might need special services before they start school. So there is a justification for spending general fund money. So again, you've seen this before, but if you have any questions or comments, I'll take them now.
Okay, at this time, I'll consider a motion to look at the resolution to make a Okay, at this time, I'll consider a motion to look at the resolution to make a permanent fund transfer from Fund Zero Four to Fund Zero, I'm sorry, Fund, from Fund Zero One to Fund Zero Four.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded and consider the following resolution. It resolve that New Prague Area School Board of Education that New Prague Area Schools will transfer fifteen thousand dollars of its unassigned general fund balance to the unassigned community services fund during the nineteen nineteen twenty school year. How do you vote on this, Leo?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Tammy? Tammy?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Dennis, yes, item passes seven zero.
Okay, next item is approval of the high school activities handbook for twenty twenty one.
Brad, do you want to talk on all three of them, so we could pass them together?
Yes, I will. Yeah, you have three handbooks, and they're the same, pretty much, I mean, we make minor changes. But the, this year, the only real change is we're just changing the years and the actual dates for when kids' grades would be checked, that kind of stuff. So there's one that we give to the coaches and advisors. And then there's another one that is posted on our website where people can look up, you know, our different policies and our different clubs and activities that we have. And then the third one is the middle school handbook. So all three of them have, you know, same information. We just moved the years from nineteen twenty to twenty twenty one.
Can we, can we do this all in one vote for all three? Okay, can I get a motion to approve the high school activities handbook, the coaches advisors handbook, and the middle school activities handbook for twenty twenty one?
So moved.
A second.
Okay. All those in favor, Mark?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Jean, yes, motion carried seven zero. Next item is a resolution establishing dates for filing affidavits of candidacy.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to consider the resolution establishing dates for filing affidavits of candidacy.
Second.
Is there a first?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. The period for filing affidavits of candidacy for the office of school board member of Independent School District seven twenty one shall begin on Tuesday, July twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty, and shall close on Tuesday, August eleventh, two thousand and twenty. An affidavit of candidacy must be filed in the office of the school district clerk and a two thou, two dollar filing fee paid prior to five o'clock PM on Tuesday, August eleventh, two thousand and twenty. The clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause notices of said filing dates to be published in the official newspaper of the district at least two weeks prior to the first day to file the affidavits of candidacy. How do you vote on this, Jean?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dennis, yes, item passes seven zero.
Okay. And the final item is adjournment, we have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, and do a vote on that, Mark?
Definitely yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
She said yes.
Motion carried seven zero. It'll be good to see everyone back at, in the building for the next meeting.
Yeah.
Yes, most definitely.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.